Good evening. Assisting me this evening are two timekeepers. They are holding indicators marked with 1 minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and a red stop sign. The time limitations are so that the evening moves along smoothly. Candidates, please let me know if you cannot see the time cards at any point during the forum. The question screeners will sort the questions from the audience into topics trying to avoid duplications and screening for personal attacks. Tonight, representing the press are David Little of the Chico Enterprise Record and Howard Hardy of the Chico News &amp; Review. They will be called upon to pose questions directly to the candidates. Some information about the city of Chico. The population is 92,464. The current budget is $118,328,483. There are 364 permanent employees and 10 bargaining groups or unions. The agenda for the city council meetings are generally decided upon by the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. City council meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM and are open to the public. Regarding the city council members, the city charter calls for seven city council members who are elected at large. The council selects a mayor and a vice mayor from among its members to serve two-year terms. A council member's term is four years. They receive a monthly salary of $600. Council members are covered by basic medical, dental, and vision insurance. Upgraded health insurance plans are available for 2% or 4% of their monthly salary, and a cell phone will be provided for city business or a $75 allowance if their own phone is used. The candidates have drawn for the order of opening and closing statements prior to beginning this forum. The candidates are seated in the order of the opening draw. Each candidate will be given 1 minute for an opening statement, 1 minute to respond to questions, and finish the evening with a 1-minute closing statement. Each question will be answered by each of the candidates. Candidates must use their time to answer the question asked and not use the time to add to an earlier answer or to rebut another candidate's answer. Because this forum is a nonpartisan setting, for voters to hear all positions, any demonstrations of support or opposition to the candidates or their positions will be out of order. Any question directed at individual candidates will be discarded because the questions must be posed to all candidates. Our time with the candidates will be approximately 2 hours. We will stop the candidate questions at 8:15 in order to leave time for closing statements. At the end of the evening, we will thank all of the candidates with our applause. Please hold your applause until that time. With us this evening are the 11 candidates seeking four city council seats. The candidates before you are Lisa Duarte, Jeffrey Glatz, Mercedes Macias, Sean Morgan, Carl Ori, Tammy Ritter, Ann Schwab, John Scott, Randall Stone, Loretta Torres, and Giovanni Tracieri. We will begin with the opening statement from Loretta Torres, followed by the opening statement from Giovanni Tracieri, and then the candidates going from left to right. Ms. Torres?
Well, I'm Loretta Ann Torres. I grew up in Chico. I lived out at the airport, Chico, Minnesota Airport, and lived in a barracks on the edge of the runway. I went through the city school system, starting at Shasta Union Elementary and all the way up to graduating from Chico High. I attended Chico State with the goal of becoming a math teacher because I liked numbers. Instead, I married my high school sweetheart and moved one county away for 53 years. And together, we farmed rice. I did the bookkeeping, the accounting, the payroll, and I think important to this job at hand, I did the budgets for my husbands in my various farming partnerships and our one corporation. So, anyway, I'm back here as a widow, and I have attended city council meetings regularly for the last three years. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Giovanni Tracieri. I'm motivated to run for Chico City Council because of my two boys. They're six and eight years old. I want to, just like I see many people I know here who are parents, grandparents, aunts, or uncles, who want to have a better and make a better future in the community for their children. That's my motivation. I want this community, this city, to be a safe place to raise my family. I want this community to be an ideal location for business, where businesses can grow and feel supported. I want this to be a premier place where we can take advantage of our natural resources, enjoy them in the safety of our city. That's why I'm running for Chico City Council. Thank you.
Good evening. Carl Ori, I'm so delighted to be here today at Marsh Jr. Hank Marsh was a friend of mine, and my daughter was in the first graduating class here. Go Gators! I came to Chico when I was 23. I was elected to the city council 3 years later. Barbara Evans was city clerk at the time. A year later, I was married, I am married, to Linda Morrison Ori. Linda is an NLO nurse practitioner working at Prom Care tonight. I was re-elected and was chosen mayor. And then I had a 30-year career in affordable housing. I'm the Western Regional Director for a National Housing Organization. I'm retiring next year, and I'm looking forward to coming back, serving on the city council, and trying to help make Chico the wonderful town that I have enjoyed, raising a family in safe neighborhoods. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mercedes Macias, but no worries on that. Nobody can seem to get it yet. I am 26 years old. I have lived in Chico for 23 years, and I am currently looking for more ways to fund my addiction to volunteering, that little habit I have, and seeing how I can better serve the community and listening to the needs. So, if you'd like to learn more, you can check out my website, articulatedjargon.com, and I want to hear more from the other candidates. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm Randall Stone. I'm running for reelection to the Chico City Council. I've been on the council for 4 years. And thank you to the League for hosting this forum. One of the things that I appreciate so much about the League's work is that it is absolutely nonpartisan, staunchly nonpartisan. And I also want to thank you all for being here. Your engagement and participation is testament to this community's responsiveness. I'm a financial, professional financial manager. I own, I've owned my own business for 13 years, and I also develop affordable housing communities and addressing the housing considerations that we have in this community. I'm the president of the League of California Cities Sacramento Valley Division and a member of the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee that's statewide and very responsive with the state legislature over housing and issues. I am married. My wife, who I've been together with for 16 years, I believe. We have a 3-year-old son, and I've lived here for 22 years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann Schwab, and I'm running for reelection to Chico City Council. I moved to Chico in 1975 to go to school, got my degree at Chico State, and entered the private sector where I worked for 20 years as an area manager. 20 years ago, I was fortunate enough to be hired at the university where I am the Director of CAVE, Community Action Volunteers and Education. I live and breathe community service. In addition to mentoring college students on how to become engaged in their community, I'm the president of Chico Velo and I volunteer for Park Watch. I'm passionate about Chico. What makes Chico so special is the partnerships and the relationships that we bring for building a better place for all of us to live. I'm looking forward to sharing more of my views with you this evening and finding out what your concerns are. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Ritter, and I appreciate the League hosting this forum so that we have the opportunity to meet with all of you. I have spent the last 25 years in the social services as the founding director of the Torres Community Shelter, later as the executive director of Habitat for Humanity of Butte County, and I'm currently the director of Family Court Services for Glen County Superior Court. I am the co-founder of Chico's new nonprofit, the Chico Youth Court, where we serve juvenile first-time offenders with restorative justice. I have been honored to serve you for the past 4 years as your counselor, and in November, it will be 18 years since I chose Chico as my home. My proudest accomplishment is I am a very proud mom of a very inquisitive, beautiful young man.
Thanks, Tammy. My name's Sean Morgan. I moved to Chico when I was 4 years old. That was 42 years ago. I think one of the most important things a public servant can do is understand the community they live in. I've lived here for 44 years, 42 years. I've gone to all public schools, graduated from Chico State 3 times. Now I teach at Chico State. I'm raising 2 boys, one that goes to Chico High and one that goes to Pleasant Valley High School, so the Amen Bowl's going to be very exciting for us tomorrow night. I served as your finance committee chair for the last 2 years. In the last 4 years, we've done some tremendous work in the city. We've climbed out of a $15 million deficit, restored our police department. We've made Chico safer and cleaner and more financially secure in the next 4 years. If you'll reelect me, I'd like to keep moving in that strong and correct direction. Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Glatz, and I'm here, I've been here in Chico for about 15 years now with my wife, who's a local Durham girl, Joni German. We have a business here in town, home decor business and international business, entertainment industry and stuff like that. But I want to get right into it. I've got a website for Belong Biography, glatsforchico.com, if you want to know some more. But I'm here because I'm upset. I'm here because I'm upset of what's going on in Chico, of the criminal element that's in here. Just last Thursday morning, someone threatened to shoot me in the park when I was walking my dog. This has to stop. This is why I'm here. I am not happy with what's been going on in the past 7 or 8 years. I've talked to people, many city managers, every city manager, and they all have 2- to 3-year plans, and nothing changes. So, I need to get it, I need to help protect you and your families. I need to get our city growing in the right direction, and I want to get us all on that playing field where our kids can go to the park and not have a problem. An adult can go downtown at night, on a Friday night, and not get harassed. This is what I think we need in our town, and this will help everything else that goes along with it. The economy grows, jobs will grow, quality of life will grow. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. My name is John Scott. I came here 38 years ago on a motorcycle with really bushy hair halfway down my back. Clearly, there's been some changes since then. As I've been in town 38 years, there's been some changes in the city as well, and some of them I like, some of them I don't like so much. You know, I've heard our city leaders, for a number of years, tell us how things are getting better. But you know, I don't think they're getting better quick enough, and I think we deserve more, and I think we deserve it now. So, that's my motivation to run. My other motivation to run is my campaign manager, who's with me tonight, Lucille. She keeps me pointed in the right direction, and so I hope, you know, to share my views with you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lisa Duarte, and it's an honor for me to be here and running for city council. My fondest memories of Chico was when I used to visit my grandmother. She moved here in the '60s. Catching tadpoles, shopping at S&amp;S, and going to the Deer Pits were one of the best memories I've had. I want to make Chico safe for your family and mine. I truly do love this city, and I hope to bring back all the wonderful things that we've been missing lately. So, I'm sure if we all work together, we can get to those things. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now for our first question. This is concerning Bidwell Park. The Upper Bidwell Park access road has not been maintained and has deteriorated to the point it is deemed unsafe. As a council member, what would you do about this? And we will start our responses with Ms. Torres.
Thank you, everyone. I don't think I did thank you before, just coming and sitting here and getting to know us. I appreciate that. Upper Park. I have some plans for Lower Park. Upper Park, but I do think we need to not close off access. We need to do everything we can to improve the road to make sure, especially during the summer months when the roads can be maintained, we need to allow hikers and everyone else access to that park. Why in the world would any of us have a park or any public land that we don't allow access to for reasons we want to preserve it? For what? If we keep a big gate around it, a big high wall around it? Access for parkgoers is important to me.
Thank you, Mr. Tracieri. Yes?
The reason why we don't have access to Upper Park is because the resources that we have to staff that are concentrated on public safety as far as keeping Lower Park and other parks safe because we don't have enough police officers. In 2014, I wrote with a couple of community members, the police staffing plan, that would get us to those levels that we need. At that time, the city had pointed a lot of their resources, the park rangers, for instance, to start monitoring other places that the police officers couldn't. The downtown city plaza was one of those areas. So, we need to staff the police department so that the park rangers can concentrate on stewarding the jewel that we have in our community and open access to Upper Bidwell Park.
Mr. Ori.
Generally, I believe that Bidwell Park is the biggest responsibility that Chico City Council has given. We're stewards of this, and it's my commitment that by the end of my 4 years, we'll leave Bidwell Park in better shape than it is today. I don't know the particulars. I haven't been on the council of specific needs in Upper Park, but I believe that the park itself needs much greater resources in order for it to continue to be the jewel that we all enjoy. And I have ideas, plans of working with the Recreation District and appointing wonderful people to the Park Commission, and believing in a commission system of appointing 7 very zealous folks that will guard the park and work towards a long-term solution to giving resources necessary to the park.
Thank you. Ms. Macias.
Thank you. When it comes to Bidwell Park, I personally like to spend a lot of time there. Like Ann, I'm an active member of Park Watch, so I love spending my time there. When we talk about Upper Park, there's a very special quality that goes along with that. It's not the same as Lower Park. People go to Upper Park when they want to be hiking, they want to be mountain biking, or they want to be rock climbing. They want to do those things that are higher up on the risk scale when it comes to outdoor activity, and that's indicated in several local bike maps and hiking trail guides that we have in the city. I think those are also put out by Chico Velo, so Ann Schwab might know a little bit more about that. So, when it comes to keeping those access roads open to vehicles, I believe that that is a huge cost on the city to maintain those roads when vehicles are driven on them, and I believe it's a very unfortunate reality that certain areas of what we consider wilderness, although there's really not much wilderness left, are very, very hard to access for certain individuals, and I regret that deeply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
With all due respect to my fellow candidates, the reason why the Park Access Road is closed is because of erosion problems and the safety of vehicles that are heading up towards the park. I'm on the board of the Chico Running Club, and I'm one of the few people that has had access to drive up there. It's a pretty ruddy, eroded road. And so consequently, that's the reason why we don't allow vehicles past the diversion dam. In order to restore that, several areas would be relatively inexpensive, a few $10,000, to repair. But opening it up to the park means that we have to have the ability to fix that erosion problem. And the reason why we don't have that is because we continue to spend money on salaries and benefits that are exorbitant, and we're in a condition of what's called service insolvency. Chuck Reed coined that term. And so if we're going to be spending money on parks, and remember, we just fought for $14,000 to keep the bathrooms in Lower Park open. So, that's the condition of the, the financial condition of the city. The roads are not accessible because of the erosion problems. Thank you.
What a great first question. What got me involved in Chico politics was the park. I was appointed to the Bidwell Park and Playground Commission, a member of Park Watch, and was a member of the Centennial Committee planning Bidwell's Park's 100th Anniversary. What a gift that was given to the city. We need to maintain that. The reason the park is, or the park road is in such bad condition is because of erosion, and it's a result of the economic downturn that we had. We didn't have enough money to maintain that. We're rebuilding our reserves, and we're going to be able to repair and maintain that road. Needs to be open for access, emergency access, access to those that people can understand the beauty of Bidwell Park. We also need to make sure that we have shared access. Prior to the road being closed, it was open to cars on Tuesday through Saturday but closed so that cyclists, pedestrians, hikers could enjoy it on the other days. I'm for shared use and a repaired road.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
So, we can't allow access in the Upper Park if it is unsafe to do so, and it is not that access is actually denied. Access to automobiles is denied. So, we are still allowed to use Upper Park, and I agree that there are ADA concerns. We do want every citizen of Chico to be able to appreciate the park, but if it is not safe to drive on that access road, then we should not have it open. What will I do as a city counselor to restore access? Well, what I have done as a city counselor is respond to the individual who has repeatedly asked the question of why is this road remaining closed? I have connected with the city manager and the public works staff, and I have advocated for us grading that road, if only for emergency vehicle purposes before the rains come.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
I hope the rains do come. The question's about maintaining the Upper Park Road. It's not just the Upper Park Road that hasn't been maintained, it's all the roads in Chico haven't been maintained. And as one of my colleagues pointed out, we did go through an economic downturn. We had some, I would say, staff challenges that had an irresponsible reaction to the economic downturn. And as a result, when you pay off a $15 million deficit, as good as it makes us feel, you don't fill any potholes, and you don't maintain the road, Upper Park, or anywhere else. So, what I would do as a counselor moving forward is continue our financial transparency and responsibility, and once we've finished fully staffing our public safety units, then we need to move on to the deferred maintenance that's been put off for years and years and years in an irresponsible, but unfortunately necessary trade-off.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz?
I actually thought it was four-wheel drive from a couple of years ago when I used to go to the bear hole. It is closed, yes. I mean, as Sean alluded to, it's a deeper, deeper issue with the money in the city. I think it's something like $3.5 million for the Bidwell Park budget or something like that, and that's a big chunk that other cities like ours don't have to pull. So, yes, the way to get the entire park operating is by basically you have to increase your revenue, you have to increase your general fund. And that goes back to the public safety issues, it goes back to growing your job base, and goes back to growing your economy. This is how you can then fund the fixing of the roads and your infrastructure. It kind of, it all goes hand in hand. It's all linked together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. I'm going to take a position here that's probably a little bit different than the other candidates have taken. You know, if you went to Yosemite, you probably noticed that you can drive right on through it, and it's pretty darn beautiful, but you probably also noticed that you can't drive a car to the top of Half Dome. Same way with Chico. We have a Lower Park, which is, you know, accessible to everyone, and we have the beginning of Five Mile, which is accessible to everyone, and the farther you get up there, the more remote it comes. And at some point, with limited resources, we need to decide if, you know, we're going to make the roads available to everyone all the time, or if we're going to take our limited resources and point them at the most important issues in the community at a given time. So, I'm certainly for maintaining, you know, access to Five Mile and Bear Hole, but you know, farther up, maybe that needs to be rural. That doesn't mean that you don't get access, it just means you don't get to drive your car up there. I see the stop sign, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duarte?
I guess we can all agree that it's closed because it's not safe to drive that way, but we have to remember that Bidwell Park is an asset of Chico, and we need to find a way to get the money, maybe through donations or grants, somehow to make this park attractive for other people to come visit. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now, our second question is from the audience, and it concerns homelessness. What leadership role do you plan to take in addressing the root causes of homelessness in our city? Mr. Tracieri?
This has been an issue that I've been working on personally, even before I decided to run for Chico City Council. The situation is dire. We are in a bit of a crisis. Our housing inventory is low, and that's just for those who can't afford it. So, it's even worse for those who can't. We need to be able to provide and come, the city needs to be able to partner with our very capable service providers who are taking leadership on this issue. We need to be able to support our police officers when it comes to mental health issues. They're right now the first responders, but we don't have a place where they could share some of the, we can have them supported. So, 51/50 calls. A robust detox facility does not really exist where we could take some of the substance abuse issues seriously. My time is up, but that's just the beginning.
Thank you. Mr. Ori?
I do take a more broad view of homeless. I think of the thousand people on any given night that lack a shelter, lack a roof in any given night. I want to focus on the bigger picture of affordable housing and the fact that we have almost a zero vacancy rate in rental housing in our community now. I believe I have the resources and the experience to work with both private and public sectors to make a difference on that. So, not just for those thousand folks that don't have a house, a roof tonight, but those that are just one paycheck away from being in that same situation where we really need to figure out where the mom with 2 kids can live decently and also look at not just beds, but look at overcrowded situations, look at folks that are living in dilapidated houses that they would not normally sanely live in except that there is no other option. So, that's the bigger picture of affordable housing and homelessness that I'd like to address as a council member.
Thank you. Ms. Macias?
This is a great question when it comes to leadership in these kind of situations. Lloyd Pendleton recently came to Chico, I'm sure several of you are aware of this, and spoke of Housing First, the Housing First model. He also spoke of champions, and that means people stepping up, acknowledging they're not going to be paid financially for this, but that the reward for taking care of our most vulnerable is going to be enormous, not just for our city and the savings that's going to happen there, but for the community at large. So, research has shown that there's a definite link between perceptions of security and mental illness or mental dis-ease. So, when we're talking about the mental health crisis, and we're talking about public safety and overexertion of our emergency services, it's not the police's job to care for the homeless, it's our responsibility. As a leadership, I actually volunteer with Safe Space, which is an emergency shelter program that we're trying to launch for December, but it's already pretty cold right now, and that last storm we had was very, very concerning for me, and that's something that anybody can do, get involved, volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Well, what a great question. I wrote my master's thesis, when I got my master's in public administration, on housing affordability and affordable housing. You know, in my tasks with the League of California Cities, I meet with housing directors and homelessness czars throughout the state of California, including San Diego in April, Santa Clara County, San Francisco County, Sacramento County, Shasta County. These are all communities that I've worked with and literally reviewed how these communities are dealing with homelessness and their housing issues. Now, we're disincentivized in the state of California to build housing of any kind. That's a Proposition 13 function, and we're probably not going to change that too much soon. But bottom line, we're not going to change that too much soon. But bottom line, we must have county involvement, countywide wraparound services to address our homelessness issues. I've been begging for that from our city manager for several years. Unfortunately, we applied for a grant to hire a social worker with our police department. We're sending police officers out to go and respond to homelessness calls when we should be sending a social worker. Our average cost, fully loaded cost for police officers is $160,000 a year. We can't afford that.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab?
Thank you. I have some firsthand experience with working with people that are experiencing homelessness through a program that we started at Cave. And it's taken me a little while to come to this conclusion, but I think what we need to do is provide homes for the homeless. Until people have a roof over their head, they cannot find a job, they cannot address their addiction issues, we cannot solve mental illness. Communities across the country have found that by housing the homeless, we can save half the money that we spend on public safety, police response, emergency room treatments. This doesn't happen in isolation, it happens with partnerships, county and statewide. We need to have leadership that can cross party lines. Last week, I spent some time with Congressman Doug Lamolfe and talked to him about the things that we need, and he was able to say, yes, I think that we can do something together. Also, I talked to Senator Nielsen's office. It's a community problem we can solve together.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
Thank you. You asked about the root cause of homelessness. People don't have homes. The root cause of homelessness is poverty. And we cannot legislate away poverty anymore than we can legislate someone not to be homeless. So, I will push and continue to push for access to harm reduction services, for access to Housing First, for appropriate behavioral health services, and for low-barrier shelters that have housing with wraparound services. I will continue to support the crisis mobile triage that has started, and I will continue to advocate that individuals who are homeless have not committed a crime, they are simply without a home.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
So, Tammy pointed out the questions about the root cause of homelessness. There's not a leadership position I could take in the city of Chico that would solve the root cause of homelessness because it doesn't start here. Certainly, our federal and state governments have pushed some people, may or may not be criminals, but we have a transient population and a homeless population. And as long as we keep treating them all the same, we're going to have a challenge. I am certainly for more opportunity for businesses that provide revenue and jobs to help give opportunity people to get off the streets if that's what they want. But at the same time, I'm fully supportive of ordinances the police department has asked for, for people that have chosen the transient lifestyle to move to a different area.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz?
Thank you. Yeah, to the root cause. I didn't get my master's in public administration. I learned about our homeless problem from being in the streets and the parks of Chico. Basically, as Tammy alluded to, the homeless, the mentally ill, the people trying to get up on their feet again, they need our help. But when we talk about 1,000 people who are homeless in Chico, as Sean alluded to, many of these are transients and many of these are criminals. They choose to live this lifestyle. They do not need to be part of the problem. So, to concentrate on helping these individuals who are actually trying to do better in their lives, we need to weed out and get rid of the people who are just basically the underbelly of that homeless society in Chico. This will enable the shelters to reuse their resources even more in a better way. They're only having to take care of maybe 300 people instead of 1,000 people. So, this is the thing that we need to work with. And as Sean alluded to, the root cause of homelessness is tough to deal with on a city level anyways. And you alluded to these other programs, the Utah program and stuff like that. And the Utah program was curing 90% of 3.9% of the homeless situation.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Well, again, I'm going to take a position that's a bit different than most of my colleagues. You know, I've been hearing about the homeless problem here in Chico for a whole lot of years, and I keep hearing about it, and I keep hearing about the solutions that are coming, but they never seem to come, although I hear a lot of proposed solutions. It kind of reminds me of something Ronald Reagan once said about the nine dirtiest words in the English language are, "We're here from the government and we're here to help you." That doesn't seem to be occurring. The homeless population is, you know, less than 1% of the community. And the other 99% of the community, while I know we're generous, and there are certainly people that need help, we all need to stop being held hostage or feel guilty over the 1%. And so, you know, right now, if you take a tour of downtown, you're going to find feces and urine, and, you know, a lot of people won't go downtown. That needs to change. When does it need to change? Now. I'm done, I could keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dwardy?
So, we need to house the homeless, and I've said this from the beginning, we need to move the homeless from the commercial and residential areas to one location where they can get the services that they need. Nobody wants to be homeless, and I'm sure there's a lot of people that are one paycheck away from being there. So, I think that we need to show a little kindness and help them. I bet a lot of them do want the help and need it.
Thank you. Ms. Torres?
This is an issue that's very dear to my heart because someone I love very much is out there, and I don't know where they are. They suffer from a mental illness. Now, as a parent, you want to help your children, you want to keep them from harm. But when we have a decision to make, whether or not we have the funds to help the homeless, I think it behooves us to try to triage mentally ill, homeless by choice, transients, and people who are really wanting to do the hard work of coming back from being homeless. That is not an easy task for anyone. So, I think we have to make sure that we target transients, that trash our parks and sell drugs to our kids. We need to pull in the welcome mat and be firm with them. And the rest, we need to have volunteers. Our wonderful city is full of volunteers.
Thank you. We will now take questions from the members of the press. We will begin with Mr. Little from the Chico Enterprise Record.
So, tell us one specific decision the council made the last two years that you agree with and one you disagree with, and why? And no fair choosing the Esplanade because the council managed to vote both ways on that one.
If I could stretch the two years, because I'm trying to remember exact dates, but I am very much opposed to the decision by the council to not move the Chapman toxic scrap metal away from Chapman School as promised over the last 12 years. So, that's a decision that I certainly disagreed with. You know, I also was one of the few that, myself and Fred Davis and a few others, that didn't like the idea of the downtown roundabout. To me, it didn't make sense to do it right then and right there, and I have to say I was wrong. It's a delightful entrance to the downtown, and it was one that I misjudged.
Thank you. Ms. Macias?
A decision that I was in favor of was staffing the police department to capacity. I actually do believe that it's going to be a lot easier for our community to access the basic care that they need from our emergency services when they have enough resources to care for us. That is something that I was for. Something that I was against is the sit lie ordinance. I'm very strongly against that. I feel that it's very dehumanizing to not allow people to sit or lay down when they need respite. I've been homeless twice, both not by my choice. Shelters are not fun, no one wants to be homeless, and I think that that law is very dehumanizing. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Well, just two years, that's a little bit unfair. I've been on the council four years, but I will adhere to it. One thing that the council has done, that they did unanimously, was approve my proposal to ban and regulate butane honey oil, enhanced butane honey oil. I had proposed that, and my colleagues passed it unanimously. That was just a few months ago. Something that I have been disappointed in is we gave pay raises, $1.5 million in pay raises to one single bargaining group, this after we rolled back employee concession citywide, $4 million from all of the employees. They had contributed to make sure that we were solvent. That was in 2013, and in 2014, we continued that effort. And since then, we've actually spent $1.5 million on pay raises for one bargaining group. I find it unconscionable, and in fact, it's devastated the city's finances, and it's the reason why we have a service, condition of service insolvency, and we don't have the park bathrooms open, and we don't have the roads and erosion under control. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab?
Yes. Well, the police staffing plan was introduced to us in 2012, and we approved it then. I'm proud that we have continued the staffing plan for the police department. One area that I've disagreed with the majority of the council on is closing City Hall to community groups. We're meeting here at Hank Marsh Junior High School tonight because we cannot meet at the city council chambers. It's a lovely building. Ms. Ritter says it's freezing. But a great AV system and a great alternative for us. But to close access to City Hall to community groups, I just think is wrong. This is what we're supposed to be providing as a government, a place to exchange our views, discuss meaty issues, and make decisions. It needs to be open to the community.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
So, the two years, that threw me for a little bit of a curve because I was going to say the policies that we set in 2013, but then every single year, the council passes a budget. And I am very proud and agree with very, a lot of the things that we have in the budget. One of the things in particular is in our last budget, we approved having our urban forester go back to a city employee position as opposed to a contract position, and that's a position we need to get filled, and we need to get filled as soon as possible. One decision that I disagree with, I have to throw them together, is both the sit lie ordinance and the protection of our waterways ordinance. All of the research shows that ordinances that criminalize what are considered acts of living are not effective, and they cost jurisdictions more money. So, I have been vehemently opposed to them, to use the word that the ER used, from the beginning, and I continue to be.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Just to be clear, I did not vote both ways on the Esplanade. On the good things, it's a split for me between the pay raises for the police department because it stopped the bleeding in the police department. At one point, we had less than 60 officers, and they were leaving town, and we could not hire any. If you don't have police officers, forget the safe streets, forget the businesses, forget all of it. It goes away, it was necessary. Along with that, I'm equally happy about the offenses against waterways and public property because the people asked for it. They were tired of the transients in the creeks, they were tired of the transients in the downtown, they were tired of the transients leaving things all over the place and being afraid to walk in those waterways, the creeks, and downtown. I'm not talking about the homeless, I'm talking about the criminal transient population. As far as the one that I'm unhappy with and voted against, I would have to say the jail fee, because there was no nexus between attacks on new homes and funding the jail. I want the jail, I want the sheriff to have it. Unfortunately, there was no connection, I voted against it, it was challenged and has been overturned.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz?
Well, so, yes, the good things, sit lie, offenses against waterways, noise ordinances, all these things the police ask for, these are all good things. They actually have a direct environmental impact on our community. A neighbor of mine is one of the department chairs at Chico State. They did a pollution study about two years ago from basically the 99, part of the 99, west of the 99, into the one-mile area, and pollution is increasing every year. And this is all from human trash going into there. So, of course, you have to be able to clean up the waterways. This is a common sense kind of thing. In addition to that, the sit lie helps our downtown businesses. I mean, I don't know, I talked to a lady who had to go out and, we used bleach to clean her front doorstep every day before she opened her business. I mean, how is this okay? And another misconception I wanted to clarify, I've got 15 seconds, the whole salary thing with the police and the fire department, they forget that's all the overtime that's involved. You know, you forget the amount of hours that they work. I think the fire department works about 56 hours a week. Of course, their salary in theory sounds high. I believe it's like $19 an hour or something like that to start. These are not high things, they're being blown out of proportion.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. I'm going to start in reverse and talk about a decision the city council made that I don't like, and that involves the junkyard on 20th. I am certainly one that is sympathetic to a business being forced to move, but, you know, the fact of it is, is that, you know, it's not a new notification. They should absolutely have help to move. They shouldn't be, you know, raped for a million dollars because suddenly things came up to, you know, to make them move, but they should move. It doesn't belong there. The item I agree with wholeheartedly is the sit and lie. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem to be applied enough because I go downtown and I see people lying, sitting, sleeping, crapping, urinating. I'm sick of it. So, not only do I support it, I wish we'd actually start to use it a little more often.
Thank you. Ms. Dwardy?
Okay, so, one that I agree with was the city council not paying for the gentleman to move his Gothic house. I didn't think city funds should pay for that. And then, something that I did not agree with was them voting not to move the junkyard. If it was written down that we were going to help move them, then we should have stood by our word and moved them, even though it was going to cost the city money. If we said we were going to do it, we should have stood by that and helped that community and moved that junkyard.
Thank you. Ms. Torres?
Oh, my. Only in one minute. Now, I'm going to take a different position, but most of the time I go to Chico City Council, I give them my little drops of what my opinion is. Chico scrap metal is a private business. I am pro-business. It is the building block of our tax base so that we can provide all of the other feel-good things that we want to do in our city. The past mistakes of our council should not impact whether or not a private business is made to move because it, the surrounding neighborhood has decided that they didn't like it anymore. They should be moving when it behooves them financially when they don't make money anymore. And if we did that, how would we attract new business to our town? Because that's what I'm all about. I don't have time to disagree. Uh-oh.
Thank you. Mr. Tresserri?
The first one, what I agree with, in 2014, the city council unanimously passed the police staffing plan. There was a lot of work put into that. There was a lot of input put in from many organizations, businesses, people in the community to create that staffing plan. And the council responded unanimously that they would approve it. We have been a bit behind on it, on that staffing plan, and that's why I'm running, part of the reason why I'm running for Chico City Council as well. What I disagreed with, I would not have passed this year's fiscal, this fiscal year's budget, not without a contingency plan for our firefighters. Right now, we are in a bit of a funding crisis. The SAFER grant expired, and, or is expiring, and now we need to figure out how we are going to fund a dozen firefighters. That should have been done during the budget negotiations and talks. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will take a question from Mr. Hardy of the Chico News and Review. For our responses, we will begin with Ms. Macias.
Thank you. So, jumping off Ann's comment, actually, in January, the city council voted to raise the rental fee on the city council chambers from $29 to $137 an hour. Should renting the chambers be more affordable for public forums like this one?
Great question. I think that there does need to be allowance made for community groups, especially nonprofits, to gather peacefully with appropriate accommodations. So, absolutely, price should be considered. I don't think that necessarily the price needs to be lowered on principle, but I do think that it needs to be taken into consideration when a group is a nonprofit, whether there can be some kind of voucher or some kind of waiver there that could happen to allow more access to that building. Although, yes, this is a beautiful space, and I'm glad that we're able to meet here. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Great question. You know, I...
You know, I, I tried to pull this back and get my colleagues to agree to allow organizations like the League of Women Voters to host this event at a discounted rate for bona fide nonprofits. And we did not, the council did not agree to that, and did not even allow the city manager to make some discretion. But evidently, that still doesn't apply, because what we did a few weeks after that decision was we allowed Congress LaMalfa to hold a community coffee in Fire Station 5 for free, for absolutely no money, not even a discounted rate, not, no discretion. So, yeah, I'm obviously opposed to the, the decision to not allow some kind of waiver, but it doesn't seem that we have a consistent policy even after creating that rule, and it's one of the reasons why we're in this very cold room. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab.
Yes, I agree that we need to readdress this issue. The rents were established by comparing the city council chamber to the Bell Memorial Union, to the Masonic Lodge, to the Elks Lodge, to companies that make their money by renting out their building. The business of government is to build relationships and for civic engagement. So, I think that we need to relook at how those rates were determined, and I believe that we need to have a special rate for nonprofits. Previously, the council could be, council chambers could be used if there was a sponsorship by a city council member who would attend one of those meetings and be responsible for making sure that it was opened, the lights were turned off, locked up at night. And I've sponsored many such meetings, because I want to be accessible and available to the community. It was something I was going to attend anyway. So, we need to readdress what those rates are.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter.
Thank you. So, we passed as a council that we would be exercising cost recovery as a city, that we would no longer be setting fees for permits, or for construction, or for other services that the city offered, lower than what it actually cost us. And we didn't set that cost recovery at 100%. We set it at, I believe, about 90%. And for some things, I think that's really important. Now, I voted against not having an exception for activities that are conducted for the public benefit, which is how I see the League of Women Voters Forum and other council candidate forums. The forum, the, the council chambers is where we hold our council meetings, and it seems that there is no better place to be hosting these kinds of forums than the actual space where the city's business will take place. So, I was against not having an exception for public benefit that was directly related to the city council. Whoa, that was a quick...
My vote on that issue just had to do with maintaining the building, just like maintaining the roads, like maintaining everything. Requires a staff member to open it, required a staff member to close it, requires a staff member to deal with the tech equipment. There's been little or no deferred maintenance on the city council chambers. If you spend a lot of time there, that is very, very evident. The only way that council can fix those chambers is by using your tax dollars. So, to go from $29 an hour, which was, in essence, free, to $137 an hour, which is still, excuse me, less expensive than anywhere else you'd rent such a facility, anybody that wants to use the council chambers is still better off. And then, finally, the city of Chico is not, nor should it be, in the business of renting out conference space. It's just not what we're supposed to do, especially given all the financial trade-offs we're having to make currently.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz.
I agree with what John said. I mean, we're not in the business, the city's not in the business of, of renting out their space. They have to cover the costs and what their space is, whether it be a nonprofit or any organization. It doesn't make sense to just, to, and then to pick and choose. Should, should our council chamber, things like this be there? Probably so. That would be a great thing to do, because they have television. I always thought they should be broadcast live, but again, the city would have to pick up the bill on that, and I don't think the city should have to pick up the bill on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Well, there's something I haven't heard yet, and that is, that that public building has already been paid for by all of you, by tax dollars. And since that building is owned by all of you, when there is a public service event like this event, we should be really having a nominal cost or no cost at all. And I would agree, though, that, you know, in terms of it being used for commercial, they can, they can pay whatever the going rate is. If it's commercial, maybe we should be charging more, but we shouldn't have any cost, or minimal cost, when our public building, which all of you have already paid for, is used for a public service, such as a forum like this. I'm being, about to shut down. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
I agree with John. I mean, otherwise, the building is just sitting there empty. Why can't more people meet there that are discussing things regarding the city, rather than charge the, this exorbitant, exorbitant fee that they have to pay, when no one is there anyway?
Thank you. Ms. Torres.
Well, guess what? I get to talk about something I disagreed that the council did. Interesting question, thank you. I was there when this decision was made, and I spoke up, because I thought the city council chambers was a perfect venue, especially for nonprofits, for community information, as the League of Women Voters has so often showed us, that they are impartial but informative. That's their bottom line. And to inform the public and, and, and charge a nonprofit just seemed wrong to me, and that's what I said, and that's what I told them. But, again, and no one wants to watch pennies more than I do, because budgets are important, and I go to every finance meeting, and I watch that bottom line, and I watch every fund transfer there is with a mag, magnifying glass, because you do, it's very small. But, by golly, this was the one exception. Let's spend a little money here, so that the community can be informed.
Thank you. Mr. Tressary.
I, I would have supported an increase in the fee. I probably wouldn't have gone that high. It is a bit high. I do think that there's, it's a little bit of both. It's a public benefit, and we do need to have a little bit of cost recovery. I've run nonprofits, I've consulted nonprofits, and we do, in looking at not, even just running a nonprofit, there are times where you need to increase your fees, and increase what you may charge the public for different services that you use. But you also receive donations, and in this case, we, it, just like Mr. Scott had said, we, we've, we've already purchased it. This is a community resource that we have. A nonprofit rate, I would have doubled the rate, it was 29, I would, probably would have put it at 65. But, I, I think that there needs to be a little bit of both.
Thank you. Mr. Ori.
Yeah, one thing that surprises me, being a candidate, is we are supposed to have an opinion on everything. It was, I was in the first council to meet in the council chamber 39 years ago. I think that for all of those years, we've shared it with the school board, and if we made a decision to keep them out of the council chambers after all these decades, I think that's wrong. It's, has anyone, many of you been at the old City Hall, the way it's been rebuilt, how beautiful that is, above, well, above where the chamber is? That also is inaccessible, very, you know, sort of used as a private office. A couple of years ago, I had the honor of bringing some workshops. I teach workshops, three-day workshops, slideshows, all of that, and I wanted desperate, definitely to bring it downtown. I didn't want to go out to the Holiday Inn, and because the city allowed me to use the council chamber in the old City Hall, we were able to bring 100 people in from out of town, eating and, and training in the downtown area. And, and so, I think we really do need to look at our school facility, city facilities.
Thank you. This next question is from the League. For our responses, we'll begin with Mr. Stone. This concerns unfunded liabilities and the grand jury. The 2015, 2016 Butte County Grand Jury Report drew attention to Chico's unfunded pension liabilities. The result would mean less money for other city needs and/or require additional revenue. Please share your thoughts on this situation.
Boy, great questions. We, we're lucky in the city of Chico, is that we did not, we don't have what's called OPEBs, Other Post-Employment Benefits, health care plans for, for retirees. A lot of cities throughout the state of California got themselves in trouble through that. Other cities did pension obligation bonds and a number of other tricks and schemes that got themselves into trouble. In our case, we continue to see rising pension costs. Ceteris paribus. If we change nothing, give no merit increases, hire no more new staff, no, no WPA increases, all of that, our employee costs, which is 83% of our budget, continues 7% to 8% increases per year. Guys, our, our budget is going up 7% to 8% per year because of those pension costs. So, our, our unfunded liabilities are not extraordinary, and we've done a halfway decent job of paying that down, but it is still a concern. It's like having a mortgage on a house that's a million dollars when you only make $60,000 a year. It's, it's problematic, and we need to continue to pay that down, but we're in much better shape because we don't have OPEBs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab.
This is something that needs to be addressed gradually, as the rates are increased gradually. City wages are, are high, 83% of our budget, but that's what we are. We're city, we're a service industry. We provide public safety, we provide roads, we provide trees, we provide parks. What we really need to do is expand our economy. We need to make sure that we have good-paying jobs, we need to make sure that we attract businesses that are, are compatible with our, our lifestyles, and provide services that will bring businesses to our community.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter.
I'm not sure how many different answers there's going to be to this particular question. When we're talking about unfunded future liabilities, we're talking about the future. And so, there is a certain presumption that, that there is going to be a certain percentage of that that is not fully funded at all times. So, as my colleagues up here have said, we are bringing down the amount of the unfunded portion. It is a slow process, and as we are working with our employees, and working with our budgetary process, and going through bargaining process, we are making progress. So, I feel that it is certainly a significant issue, but in terms of what the citizens of Chico have said is the most significant issue, it is public safety and the services that we offer in our city, and those services are the services that we offer to everyone, not just to one community.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
So, this question is kind of along the same lines as the root cause of homelessness. Pension liability, like social security, like CalPERS, all these different pension-type funds, we're not going to call, solve the root cause of that here in Chico. What we can, and first of all, the other thing, as far as the unfunded liability, we're liable for that if everybody retires at the same time, which is kind of, kind of unlikely. But we do need to hold the contracts in place, we need to hold the pensions in place as we continue to hire more people. We've had policies together as we set contracts, that we want to hold costs where they are and not give too much away, because we don't want to sell the future of the city away and leave it for our kids to pay. But in the meantime, it's one step at a time, it's a little step at a time, and we're focused on it, but we can't, we can't solve it tomorrow, any more than we can solve homelessness tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz.
I mean, it's, the two things that I can think of directly, it's a long-term solution. You can't fix this thing, something like this overnight. I would imagine almost every local government, and state government, and national government has the same problem. When the economy turns bad, cash flow restricts, these things, these things happen, they will happen. So, the quick, there's no quick answer to it, but of course, you need to grow your economy, you need to grow your, your tax base, you need to increase your general fund revenue, increase all your revenues. The other thing you can do immediately, of course, is just look at the, the assets that Chico owns itself. Are we getting the best return of investment on these assets? What can we do? Can we manage these better, that the assets that the city owns? And that, I think that's an important actual area to look at. So, again, it goes back to the, it's a long-term fix, and, and the city council's working on it, and every city council will work on it, because it's responsibility of the city to manage that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Well, I would agree, in one sense, with my colleagues, that this is not a problem that can be immediately fixed. However, what can immediately be done is that we start telling the truth. As an example, if a particular imaginary position were to pay $100,000 a year, and after 25 years of paying this position $100,000 a year, the lifespan of this individual is going to be another 25 years, that they received the same amount of money when they didn't work, the truth of it is, is that that cost is $200,000 a year. Now, we've got a problem, the, the whole country's got a problem, every city has a problem. We can't fix the problem till we start telling the truth about the problem, and we're going to, we need to tell the truth about the cost, and we need to fully fund whatever it truly costs in the year, in the year it happens. Yes, we're going to have to have some type of system for what we've, the sins we've already committed, but if we start telling the truth, and we start fully funding in the year it happens, maybe it'll get better, instead of everybody showing up here in 20 years and hearing the same type of story that we're hearing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Yes, we do need to find a way to offset these costs, if they do happen in the future, by maybe generating some more income for the city, but it's hard to say where we're going to get that from.
Thank you. Ms. Torres.
Again, we're dealing with past mistakes that city council has made. We own approximately 300, the last count, various lots in the city and homes. The city manager, a few, six months, maybe eight months ago, was asked to make an inventory in order to perhaps sell some of this extra inventory. Why we even own it, it was before my time, so I can't be sure, but these are assets that we don't really have to have in our city. Also, I went to a, a meeting of the, several developers meeting at the top, of the City Hall, the old City Hall, and they were talking about the 1% growth that we had, had for the last few years, and they were hoping for a 2% growth, which, of course, will make the pie bigger, so our tax base will be bigger, so we can have some better services, and we can come out of the doldrums. We're only going to do this, we watch our pennies, if we keep on it, if we look at every single budget, every single item.
Thank you. Mr. Tressary.
This highlights one of the most important issues of this election. The decisions that we make today impact our children and their children. Those who you vote for in this election will make decisions that will affect the future of Chico. Fiscal policy is one of the most important issues that you need to look at when you vote for a candidate. You want somebody whose approach is going to be looking at the budget conservatively. How do we fit within our budget, our balanced budget? Don't go beyond our means. The decisions that we make now, if we, if they are not corrected, will be left for our children. I, for one, do not want that to happen. My commitment is to address this in a very conservative and for the long run.
Thank you. Mr. Ori.
We've mentioned Masters in Public Administration, and I'm fortunate to have mine, Chico State. I, I did it after I flunked out, 20 years later, went back. But I often say that I come from the Fred Davis School of Grad, of Public Administration. That's where I really learned what, how a city really needs to be built. There's talk about the reserves all getting spent down. You know where those reserves came from? Those came from the Fred Davis School of Administration. Those were good city councils that set aside reserves year after year, so we got through the recession. So, as I think about this complicated financial issue that you brought up, that's what my focus is, is to look at that budget every year with a magnifying glass, to have transparency with all of our union, union and payroll negotiations, and to always ask myself, what would Fred do?
Thank you. Ms. Macias.
So, these issues are really, really unfortunate, because when you choose a career, of course, you want to have those promised benefits carry on. That's a very, very unfortunate situation that we're in as a city, to have unfunded future liabilities. However, it is expected that our population will continue to grow, at least for... However, it is expected that our population will continue to grow, at least for several years, and when our budget is increasing, our income has to be increasing as well. The city of Chico needs to get creative about ways to bring in new income and how to make our community more solvent, how to make everything fit together a lot better and close those gaps so that people are not being cheated out of their hard-earned retirement. Thanks.
Thank you. This next question is from the audience. For our responses, we will start with Ms. Schwab. There is much talk about improving safety in Chico. What measures do you use to judge safety in Chico?
There's a lot of statistics that would measure safety. How many crimes have been committed, where those are committed, and that gives us a lot of information on where we need to concentrate our efforts. For instance, in the South Campus neighborhood, that's the majority of our calls on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and there's ideas of what we can do to reduce those number of calls. But the other measure of safety is how people feel about the confidence of their police and firefighters on how well they are going to be able to serve our community, how accessible they are to our community, and how responsive they are to our community needs. And our current police chief is really emphasizing community policing, reaching out into the different neighborhoods and business groups to find out how we can better serve the community to make them feel safe. And that's a true measurement of how people feel that they're safe in our community.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter.
That's a challenging question. When I look at the safety of Chico, what I'm looking at is health and welfare issues. I'm looking at how well taken care of is each member of our community. And when we have unaddressed public health crises, then I think our community as a whole does not feel safe. There is a housing crisis. There is a crisis around substance abuse treatment. We have crises that have been not of the city's making, but of legislation that was passed on a state level that's releasing criminals into the community with no transition plans, with no housing provided. And I think all of those things greatly affect not just the safety, but our perception of how safe we feel. So I go back to housing first, go back to wraparound services, social services, and addressing those in our community who are most vulnerable.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. Tammy referred to the state challenges, Prop 47, which releases criminals into our streets, Prop 57, which is going to release more criminals into our streets. Why do we feel unsafe? Sacramento keeps pushing criminals into our streets. What we do with the police department, what do I do about public safety? I listen to the police chief. In the past four years, I've agreed or motioned for every public safety ordinance the police department has asked for. We've tried to give them the resources that we can. Since 2014, we've hired 21 new police officers. It's not enough. If we want a gang unit, which we don't have, if we want a traffic unit, which we don't have, a property crimes unit, which we don't have, target unit, which is understaffed, and school resource officers, we have to get somewhere to 108. And we need to continue to watch every financial decision we make to keep public safety our number-one priority and not get sidetracked by a bunch of feel-good measures that will not allow that to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz.
Well, I don't feel we are safe, and that's firsthand experience from my family and myself and our neighbors. I feel that Councilor Stone and Councilors Ritter are putting the interest of a transient or a criminal in front of ours. I believe the sit lie is important. I believe all the ordinances the police ask us for are important. They give them tools to address concerns when they arise. They need to have these tools. You have to support your police department. I also believe that it goes hand in hand, the quality of life is the most important thing. I'm sure everyone in this room probably knows somebody or has a neighbor who has been affected by a transient or a criminal. Again, I'm not trying to be specific. I am not talking about the homeless person who might be mentally ill or needs our support. I am talking about the transient who chooses to be here and the criminal. They are affecting our public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Well, the way I measure public safety is, can you go out in the public? And the fact of it is, is that most people I talk to are afraid to go downtown unless there's a sponsored or scheduled event. You know, I talk to families, mothers and children, and they tell me almost universally, no, you know, I don't like to go downtown. I feel uncomfortable. If you want to measure a public safety, after you leave here tonight, drive to the downtown 7-Eleven and have a look at that parking lot. Tell me how that makes you feel. As I look at all of you out there, my suggestion or my guess is, you probably wouldn't feel comfortable walking the streets of downtown Chico right now, and you probably wouldn't feel all that comfortable walking them at 1 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. That's how I measure public safety. It needs to change. Now, when we, you know, a lot of the policemen have given anecdotal evidence that about three-quarters of their calls are spent answering transient issues. Think about this. If we solve transient issues, we have four times as many police without hiring another one. So I'm getting the stop sign.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Yes, I believe public safety is a concern, and the people of Chico feel that they aren't safe. But one way we could help with that is maybe add some streetlights so a lot of the streets aren't dark at night, and also have people look out for one another. You know, back in the day, people used to look out for one another. You saw something suspicious, you would let somebody know. You would call the police. That would also help the police with some of these things, so they can't be everywhere. The police can't be everywhere in the city taking care of these things. We have to step up and help them.
Thank you. Ms. Torres.
This is a great question because it's something that I am going to urge each one of you to go home and download Nextdoor.com. You will put in your address, and it's almost as though you've got a party line on your, the old-fashioned party line, hey, Velma, I saw a suspicious guy down the road. Look out for him. Or the guy with the white and red bike. Oh, I think he's, you know, he's taking pictures. I'm suspicious. Our police chief has safety meetings also in different parts of our city, and it really is, would behoove you to make sure you go to one, and you will be told if you go to Nextdoor.com when that is. And the police will tell, you'll tell the police what your problems are, but they'll also tell you how you can be less of a target for the coming, we will have a wave, people, if 57 passes, the coming unrest, how do you say that? Un-safety in our city. Be careful out there.
Thank you. Mr. Trasari.
This is precisely why I'm running. We need to have a public safety plan that works for all of its citizens. The police staffing plan was created because crime has been on the rise, and we needed police officers to answer calls. And so, and that wasn't happening in a way that was acceptable to the citizens. We do have big gaps in our public safety. We have no school resource officers. We do not have a traffic unit. When I say traffic unit, I'm talking about a unit that is dedicated to looking for DUIs, for instance. We do not have a street crimes unit. We are severely understaffed in the police department and need to address the crimes with the units that pertain to those crimes.
Thank you. Mr. Ori.
The question, I think, was more broadly safety, and I want to address a broader safety issue, perhaps to, let me tell you a little bit about what I hope for as a council member. I have this goal, you're going to laugh at me, but we're a university town. We, it's the core of our economy. If we could tell parents, if parents could believe that by sending a student to Chico they're safe, I think that just helps our town. What a reputation, this is a safe place to send your child. So I want a goal of no deaths, no student deaths, year after year. I know I will fail that some years, but we ought to look at alcohol abuse. We ought to look at mental health issues with students. I don't want anyone ever, again, to throw themselves under a train because they weren't heard. We didn't embrace them. I know, you know, there's divisions, town and gown, and this is the core economy of Chico, and we can make it the safest town in the university system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Macias.
So I measure safety, and when something bad happens to me, what's going to be done about it? Is there going to be justice? Am I going to absorb the full pain of that? That's how I measure my personal safety. I feel that very few groups do feel safe in Chico. I don't think it's isolated. I don't think the homeless feel safe. I don't think the LGBTQ+ community feels safe. I don't think people of color feel safe. I also don't think that people who identify as white feel safe. I don't think that anybody is feeling safe, and the reason I feel that that is, is because of disconnect from each other. We're not talking, that climate of fear, that climate of terror is very, very driving. It's very pervasive, and the only way that we can cure that is by reaching out to each other, by saying, I'm having a problem. This happened to me. What can be done? And someone else reaching out and saying, I have the same problem. We all have the same problems here in this community if we're really listening to each other. I think that problem is fear. So when I see a violent crime occur, do I feel empowered to call emergency services? Do I think something's going to be done? Do I think I can do something? Do I think that if I'm screaming for help, are my neighbors going to call? Lisa really hit it on the head with, we used to be in a time where we could rely on each other as a community. That time is right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Well, look, I made the motion to pass the police staffing plan, and it was unanimously approved, so we can just kind of get that off the table. We recognize that we needed more police officers and still need more police officers. I proposed that we have a traffic enforcement being handled by contract under CHP, which was rejected. I created the largest neighborhoods on Nextdoor.com, which Ms. Torres mentioned, that helped address some of the neighborhood problems that we were having, tire slashings and all kinds of other dilemmas. It was my proposal to link our neighbors together in those neighborhoods and address those problems, all before the police department even knew that there was an epidemic. But, you know, the question was regarding metrics. We can go mortality, morbidity, and our housing costs. All of these things are reasons why our community is not healthy. And that traffic enforcement directly impacts the students that we've seen killed on our streets in our community over the last four years. So we need the traffic enforcement. We already have the staffing plan that we're moving forward with.
Thank you. We will turn once again now to the press. We will start with a question from Mr. Hardy of the Chico News and Review. For our responses, we will begin with Ms. Ritter.
Thanks. How will you reach across the aisle and set policy with people that you disagree with?
Well, as the chair of the Internal Affairs Committee for the past four years, I have been doing that for the last four years. We have worked diligently on issues around sustainability, speeding alcohol policy. I'm sure lots of you remember the Cup D A O ordinance, which we worked for two years across the aisles to make sure that the city had a policy that was enforceable and that was going to be of public benefit. Now, I'm not sure that either side thinks it's perfect, but that's how you collaborate in the city. I have served as, on the Butte County Air Quality Resources Board as Chico's representative for two years, again, working with people across the aisle on sustainability issues and emissions issues. So I feel, oh, my goodness. So I have, I have worked across the aisle and have been eager to work with all of my colleagues on council.
So, great question. How will you reach across the aisle? Tammy said it really well when we worked together, when she kept saying "we," that alcohol, CUP, D A ordinance, a lot of that work was Councilmember Ritter and I, and then we were joined by our various colleagues, whether it's been Internal Affairs, whether it's been on the Finance Committee with, Ann said no. She said she wasn't part of that. Did you hold your hand up? Oh, she was part of it. Okay. Whether it's been Councilmember Stone on the Finance Committee. We got a question early on at the Chamber Forum, and somebody asked, you know, why is your council so polarized and why are things so divisive? Somebody made the comment, you know, we're very passionate about this community, but I've seen this council come together and put those things aside and pass a lot of very, very good things that if we were as polarized and divisive as people think we are, never would have happened. I see it in closed session. I see it in Internal Affairs. I see it in Finance Committee. We're willing to put whatever those ideological things are aside and do what's best for the community, and I can say that about every one of my colleagues.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz.
Yeah, there's common ground on everything. I mean, everyone here feels that public safety is a number-one concern. Some, I mean, none of the council members want the lady who got assaulted a couple days ago over in front of Office Depot, you know, from some transient assaulted her when she had to call. Nobody wants that to happen, so there is plenty of common ground. There's plenty of common ground on the budget. Nobody wants to have fiscal deficit anymore. So there is plenty of common ground to work at. We can agree, we can disagree on how we need to get there, and that's government, and that's good government. You need to have opposing views. And then it's the responsibility of that group to come up with a core responsibility, a core answer, and take care of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Well, as you've all heard tonight, I definitely have some views that are different than my colleagues at this table. Having said that, I think that everyone sitting up at this table is awesome, and I'm really honored to be amongst them. So I don't have any enemies here, even though we have some differences of opinions on some issues. What that basically means is that I'll listen, I'll compromise, and we'll come up to a solution that serves everybody the best as possible, given any particular situation. As I said before, our views differ, but my opinion of the individuals here is very high. So no matter who wins, I think I will do just fine negotiating and coming up with the best outcome for all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Yes, listening. Not everybody can agree on something. You get a lot of good ideas from somebody you may disagree with. I think that's why there's seven people on the council. They all have different opinions, but they all want to do what's best for the city.
Thank you. Ms. Torres.
I think that human beings have the most incredible, creative way of problem-solving that I've ever seen when they do this. There are no perfect ideas, but when they get in a huddle and they figure out one faction wants this, another faction wants that, and the word compromise means a parallel, someone has to give like you're in a tug of war. No, I think once we open up our minds to the third idea that we can come up with, that is a beautiful thing to see, and it's a beautiful thing to compromise or to comprehend. We can do this if we look at each other and think, this doesn't have to be this way. We can put our heads together and come up with a solution that is better than either one of us thought to begin with.
Thank you. Mr. Trasari.
This is what I do. This is how things will get done in our community. Before going on city council, we need to have a community that really works collaboratively together. I really firmly believe that our community works best when everyone participates in their own way to its success. So we all have a part to play in it. Doesn't matter what party you may be affiliated with or what group you may be affiliated. We all have a responsibility to participate in this city's success. The solutions to our community's challenges are not necessarily going to come from the people on this, at this table. It's going to come from all of us in this room. It's going to come from those who are sitting in green chairs. That's how we are going to get things done. That's how we passed the police staffing plan. That's how we created the Downtown Ambassador Program and other programs like that, where we invite everyone to participate.
You know, this is not theory to me. Can you imagine asking the city of Gridley to allow you to build a 45-lot low-income housing subdivision? Or the people of Corning? Or Orland?
Or Orland? Or Hamilton City? Or Yakima? Or the many other cities that I've worked with? You go in and you compromise, you listen, you get the facts right, you know what the laws are, you explain mutual benefit, and you look for areas of agreement. So I've done that. I've built 12 subdivisions. I've helped 300 families become homehires in beautiful homes in all of those communities. And I would like to offer that as an example of how I can work with people of different opinions.
Thank you. Ms. Macias.
So this goes back to a community event that I attended on Wednesday, no, Tuesday. Tuesday, it was called Finding Common Ground in Polarized Times. It was hosted by the Interfaith Council. And there were upwards of 300 people there, so it was a pleasure to be in the room with everybody. And what it was, was lots of community members with lots of different beliefs, saying, "These are the issues. Here are both passionate sides. Both sides have a point, and I think it's our responsibility as leaders in this community to listen to both points, even if they make you angry. There's a reason why it's making you angry. It's striking on something that you might be uncomfortable with, but it may be true." And I've always listened to that approach with something that I come from is saying, "I actually have a love of discomfort. I actually like that feeling of, ooh, okay, what is that? How to identify where to go from there?" If someone touches you in that way, it's our responsibility as human beings and as leaders, especially in the City Council, to deal with things that make us uncomfortable, to find that common ground, and to hear where someone's coming from as a human being, what their needs are. If somebody is saying to you, "Well, it's too expensive to house the homeless. We can't afford it." You say, "Well, actually, studies show it's cheaper." There's the common ground. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Mr. Ori and I have similar experiences. I've gone into other communities negotiating for affordable housing communities, and the exact same experience is what I've experienced in the past. But the reaching across the aisle happens all the time. I think our partisan-ness is hyped up to some degree. Councilmember Morgan and the rest of my colleagues, you know, we get together all the time. The Butane Honey Oil Ordinance, which I proposed, was no problem passing. Sex trafficking ordinance and the research there was sent to Internal Affairs, and they're working on it. Cape Breakers Alternative Custody Supervision, which I proposed, was also passed unanimously. At the Finance Committee, we work on these things all the time. So, you know, it's hyped that we have differences, and of course, we have disagreements. We're all looking for the best opportunities for this city, and sometimes we just disagree. My favorite phrase of, with everything that I do in the city is, "So what? So what if we disagree? Can we find places where we can agree?" And we do that all the time.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab.
I live by this motto, "Life is for learning." Learning how to open up your minds to different people's opinions. My greatest strength is individualization, to find out what a person can bring, what strengths a person brings to a table, and how we can find how they can fit into the solution. I look for ways to find common ground, and I can give you several examples of that. I chaired the Sustainability Task Force, and we had people with a wide range of opinions. Some people didn't believe in climate change. Some were passionate about it. We found common ground in wanting to save energy. The general plan was a process that we went through, and that was a real lesson in compromise and how to get a plan established. But the greatest lesson I learned was through, as being mayor. I came up with some rules of how I wanted the community members to conduct themselves, and I found out that those were things that I needed to do myself, to listen, to respect, consider, and to treat each other with civility.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we have time for only one more question in order to leave time for closing statements. That last question will be from Mr. Little from the Chico Enterprise Record.
So the number of city employees has declined the last four years, but the average compensation, salaries, and benefits remains among the highest in the state while the city is pinching pennies. Is this a problem in your mind? And if so, what should the council do about it?
So overall, I can see why that would raise a red flag. The challenge when we use the average and not like a standard deviation, if the city of Chico doesn't employ, say, enough lifeguards, there's not a number pulling the average down. So if we don't have any lifeguards, but we compare ourselves to another city that pays $12-an-hour lifeguards, their average is going to be much lower. So that statistic in and of itself is not problematic because it doesn't really tell us anything. Having said that, as we addressed earlier, one of the responsibilities of what I believe is a responsible government is to hold costs down, and our highest costs are our employee costs. Now, I will tell you, I want the absolute best police officers. I want the best firefighters. I want the best finance staff that we can get for the money that we have. But we have to be responsible and not start spending money that we don't have, which is primarily what has got us into that $15 million deficit to begin with.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz.
Exactly. It's kind of a simple business decision. If you're cutting your staff down from 10 to 6 people, you need the best 6 people out there. And if you have to pay them a little bit more money, you're going to still get more service out of them. It's the same thing for the Fire Department, same thing for the Police Department. You get what you pay for. It's an easy thing to decide on. I don't want above, I don't want average staffing at the police force. I want above-average staffing. I don't want a police officer just to get $50,000 a year if there's a better one that can be get $70,000 and get so much more work done. It's the same for our city managers, the same for everybody in the Finance Department. It's the same in any business, and as long as the city is run like a business, you will have efficiencies, and the efficiencies will benefit the city in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
The problem is that, for so many years in the past, we ignored telling the truth about the true cost of employees, and we've had, you know, wages and benefits that exceeded our ability to pay for them. That being said, no city employee, no fireman, no police officer should be penalized, punished, asked to give back their salary because we made a bad deal. You know, when I make a bad deal, I have to live with the result. And so for all the past people that are still working for us today, we need to honor our contract with them. However, we can start telling the truth to each other, and moving forward, we can make sure that we fully fund and fully recognize the cost of city employees, rather than trying to shove off book a lot of it, which, you know, you can't solve a problem if you don't tell the truth. So it's two-pronged. One, we take care of the people that we've already hired, and two, we pay better attention to the people we're going to hire in the future as to the cost of those people.
Thank you. Ms. Dwardy.
These city employees already make a certain amount of money, and it really wouldn't be fair to cut any of their wages. What I believe that we need to do is we need to spend a little bit of money in order to get more people to come to our city so we can increase our revenue, so we can afford more police officers, more firefighters, and all those things that we really need to have here.
Thank you. Ms. Torres.
Yes, when I started going to City Council, City Finance meetings, I was absolutely appalled at what the state actually mandates for new hires, the 15% increases that are down the road and that we have to absorb, whether we can afford it or not. Now, we do have policies in place that new hires don't come back, it's kind of a complicated situation, come back with increased... Anyway, we do have some policies in place that might mitigate some of this, but we have got to look at the bottom line, every single penny that we are spending. And we cannot stop with asking employees that we have to cut their salaries because we made, or the city made mistakes in the past in that they spent and overspent $1 million a year for 10 years and drained that reserve. We have to get that reserve back, and we have to be careful how we do it.
Thank you. Mr. Tressary.
I do think that the statistic on the average is a little bit misleading. What the point is, we want a city and city staff that are well-compensated and well-valued. We need to value our police officers, our firefighters, our city management. We do that by compensating them well. We can't do that at the expense of crumbling our city and at the expense of poor fiscal decisions. I do think that in the council that you elect this fall, November, we'll need to make hard decisions when it comes to these types of compensations.
Thank you. Mr. Ori.
David, I think that if we, we need to deal with the overtime issue, and really, I think it comes to having adequate staffing so that we don't have a model of response by overtime. There's arguments both ways, but I think that's one way we get at that. And we have an understanding of reasonable service levels. I think we also, I want to look at citywide. Public Works staff tells me that they haven't had raises in nine years. I haven't verified that, but I don't doubt that. And so I think we need to look at the whole health of the city. When I was on the council, and it was last century, there was a 5%, 10% raise that was going to be given across the board. And I proposed instead that we total that up and divide it by the number of employees and give everyone the same amount. You know, I think there's ways that we can get at this issue of higher-end, overcompensated, perhaps, end of the employees and spread the wealth out, the resources out, over the entire city force.
Thank you. Ms. Macias.
So I want to talk about what happens when expectations exceed possibilities. You really cannot pay someone to work past what is possible for that person in that role. So when you say that you want the best quality police officers, absolutely, we all agree with that. But when you pay one police officer more money, that one police officer is probably can be the best police officer in the world, but they can't go above that. There's no way for them to exceed that expectation. And that's why I'm in favor of fully staffing the Police Department and staffing our city staff. They work very, very hard. The people who have been left after this downsizing are carrying more responsibility and more burden, which is increasing their need for mental health services and creating more disconnect and stress for these individuals. Yes, they're paid more. The stress is something that you can't pay someone to forget about. I think that we really need to evaluate, as a city council, ways to distribute that wealth more evenly so that we can all work together.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Well, remember, all things being equal, if we just take a picture in time, every single year, our employee costs are going up 7% to 8%. Our sales taxes and property taxes aren't keeping up with that. Our median household income in the city of Chico is $44,000 a year. Our average cash pay for our police, cash pay, not counting benefits, which is about 40% of employee costs. Average cash pay for police officers is about $99,000 a year. And these are not managers. Average cash pay for firefighters is in excess of $165,000 a year, plus benefits, so you have about $232 fully-loaded cost. We have employee staff members that have 12-month severance packages. Think about that. Most of the people in Chico wouldn't even get a two-week notice. They have 12 months that we pay them when they leave. It just, and we wonder why we have to fight over $14,000 to keep the bathrooms open in Vividwell Park. This is just simply not sustainable. We have to fix it, and the longer we ignore it, the harder and harder the pain is going to be in order to fix it.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab.
I'm glad Vice Mayor Morgan brought up the fact that we need to compare like salaries to like salaries, you know, the lower-paid jobs like the lifeguards, but also if CalFire is doing the fire service, or if the Sheriff's Department is doing the public safety. I don't know about you, but I want to have the absolute best employees that we can have. They are our biggest asset. We are a service industry. We want to have the best-trained police officers, firefighters, public works folks. We invest a lot in our staff, and we want to make sure that we can retain them. Give you one example of what great staff members that we have. At the start of the recession, after Obama was elected, he introduced the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and he wanted to know what projects we had that were shovel-ready. Well, in our Public Works Department, we had one staff member who took the plan book home and brought back 300 projects that we could receive funds for. That's the kind of staff members that we need.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter.
We do need to be able to maintain staffing levels across the city. When we had all of our cuts, our Housing Department was cut by 75%. We have department heads now that have taken on huge burdens. We don't just need public safety employees to deal with public safety issues. We need our public works folks. We need all of our trades and craftspeople who are cleaning up our streets and maintaining our trees and maintaining access to areas in the city. We need to be competitive to hold on to the employees that we have, and we need to be fair and let them know that we value them. There is a balance in there. We have to continue to manage the city budget so that we can become proactive instead of reactive. And that goes to things like using alternative custody individuals to clean our bathrooms at half the cost of our employees.
Thank you all for your thoughtful answers. It is now time for closing statements. The order for closing statements that has been drawn is Mr. Tressary, Ms. Dwardy, Ms. Macias, Mr. Stone, Mr. Ori, Ms. Torres, Mr. Glatz, Ms. Ritter, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Scott, and Ms. Schwab. We will begin with Mr. Tressary.
Thank you. How are you going to make a decision on who, on which four you are going to vote for? There's a couple of ways you could do it. One, based on the statements that we have made today. Very limited, one-minute statements, and it gives you an idea of what we really believe and what we would like to do for the city. The second thing is to really look at the record of what people have done in our community, the people standing or sitting here before you. A little bit of that record for me is I serve as the Director of Community Engagement at the North Valley Community Foundation. I serve as, I am a small business owner. I serve on the Board of the Chico Children's Museum, Reading Pals, the Chico Police Community Advisory Board, Clean and Safe, the DCBA, the Downtown Ambassador Program. It's a record of community service, looking for ways that would serve our community and the greater good. I hope to be your candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dwardy.
Some of the things we didn't talk about tonight was the lack of healthcare providers that we have in our city. We need to improve our infrastructure, of course, public safety and homeless. I think we need to take our city in a new direction and look for a change. So no matter who you vote for this year, I believe that you need to all come together and vote for a change, some new ideas, bring new faces, no matter who it is. I believe that that's, we all need to come together and do that.
Thank you. Ms. Macias.
There are so many ways to express gratitude to each other. Money is not the only way. When we look out and we see a police officer and we think, "Wow, we're really glad that person is there," say thank you to that person. Talk to people as if they are human beings. Do not forget that we're all on this one planet together, and we all have to coexist whether we like each other or not. When I leave here today, I'm going to be going to work three jobs to support myself. I still volunteer. I still get involved. I know that I am mortal. I'm not going to be here forever. And so when I think about that, I think, "Okay, what am I going to do to show my values?" People say, "Don't talk about your politics." Well, maybe there's some truth in that. But what I do want to say is that I hope that some of you will feel empowered to talk about your values and to listen to the values of others so that we can find common ground, so that we can move forward as a community, whether you're running for City Council, whether you volunteer for a nonprofit, whether you care for your home. All of these things have intense value, and we need to express that.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Well, I think it's been pretty clear who's done their homework and who hasn't, those that have the experience. Obviously, values are important, and we've tried to demonstrate what our values are and how they align with yours, or perhaps they don't. But those were the technical skill and understanding, and the history, the legislative, personal, professional history in this community. You can find out mine, since there's no way I could do it in one minute, at www.stonefor council.com. But, you know, it's my 13 years as a self-employed businessman. I didn't create a business six months ago. This is the, I... This is the, I sign my own checks. You know, I collect my income from my own business activity. And I'm the only one up here who's created 75 full-time equivalent annualized jobs by building housing for poor people. Ooh, I should be careful with Mr. Ori. Almost the only one up here. So, you know, you're looking at our values, and you're also looking at our technical skill and our understanding of what this community needs and our ability to process that, and my history speaks for that.
Thank you. Mr. Ori.
Jobs is my number-one priority. And the quickest way we get there is returning commercial air service to Chico. Santa Rosa did a study when they lost their airline, and they found that the loss of the air service cost the local economy $30 million. Let's say it's only $10 million in Chico. That's a pretty good chunk of keeping jobs and bringing in new jobs. I'm also been known for fighting the farmer's market eviction. Those are 100 employers, those are 100 businesses that united behind my leadership to fight City Hall, to maintain probably one of the best things that we have going downtown. I've served in the city council. I've continued to serve. I've served on the Silver Dollar Fair. I've served on the Airport Commission. I'm the seventh kid in a family of 14. I know how to get along in groups. I owe a great debt to the city, and I'd like your help to help repay that debt.
Thank you. Ms. Torres.
If you want a city councillor who will support the police, the fire, and their staff and keep you and your family safe, then I am your candidate. If you want a city councillor who will make decisions, help to make decisions at the city council level that will welcome businesses into our community and make decisions at the council level that will help them to succeed, I'm your candidate. If you want a city councillor who will look at every single line item on the budget with a magnifying glass, I do it already. I'm your candidate. And if you want a city councillor who will be both compassionate but firm with our homelessness in our city, I again am your candidate. I have seven grandchildren in a 10-mile radius of Chico and a passion to keep the Chico I love intact for the next generations. Vote for me, Loretta Ann Torres, my grandchildren, and yours, if you should have them. We'll be grateful.
Thank you. Mr. Glatz.
I'm not a politician. I'm a businessman who decided that Chico needed a little bit of help, and I was upset. I've hired more people and probably paid more money to more people than anybody up here. I've consulted to ExxonMobil, I've consulted to PepsiCo. I know a little bit about business. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here because my family is in danger, and you are in danger. Our community has changed. It is not what it was 10 years ago or even 15 years ago when I came here and thought this was a wonderful, small town. Everything starts with public safety. Everyone, every single thing does. Your quality of life stems from that. The economic growth of Chico stems from that. Everything stems from public safety. If you want to attract families and business to your community, you have to have a clean and safe environment for everybody to come. If you want families to come, doctors to come, their family needs to feel safe and secure here. They do not want to go downtown and stumble across people or smell something that they don't want to do. It all starts with public safety. And I truly feel that that is what we need to do, is start there, increase the revenues through increasing our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter.
I've spent the last four years working diligently for the city of Chico. I have chaired Internal Affairs, digging into the details and the minutia of policy that comes before council. As a professional mediator, I have served collaboratively, ooh, that's a hard word, collaboratively, not just with the council, but with all of the constituents of Chico. I've worked to promote sustainability issues, voted for a responsible budget, and dug through agendas to assure that every dollar is spent how it was allocated. I support responsible development, robust social services, and creative solutions to Chico's challenges. My name is Tammy Ritter, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
There's an old saying, if we don't turn around now, we might just get where we're going. Well, four years ago, that was a pretty scary premise, but today is the root of our optimism. We're on the right track. We've come a long way in a very, very short time, but we still have some way to go. I fought very hard to get us on the right track. I will fight even harder to keep us there. The city is cleaner, safer, and we are doing more with less to give us what we all deserve, the beautiful, clean, financially secure community that attracted us all here in the very beginning.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
First of all, I'd like to share my gratitude to the League of Women Voters and to all of you who have spent a couple of hours tonight listening to us up here. What I'd like to say is, you know, status quo. I think Ronald Reagan said it best, "Status quo is Latin for the mess we are in." If you like the way things are, your vote really isn't too difficult. Just vote for the same four incumbents, and you'll have the same situation you've had for the last four years. If you want to change, you're going to have to vote for a change. I'm not here to be a manager, and that status quos are managers. I'm here to shake the status quo and to make some changes. I don't like the way things are going right now. I don't like the pace, and I don't like hearing the constant stories that I've heard year after year after year, and nothing seems to change. We can tell the truth, we can start change, and we can start it now. And so I would appreciate that, you know, you make that decision. Are you going to vote for more of the same, or are you going to vote to change the status quo? Thank you. My name's John Scott. Vote for me if you think I represent your views.
Thank you. Ms. Schwab.
In the past 12 years that I've served on council and two terms of mayor, I've proven that I am an effective leader. I still have passion, and I know how to get things done. I've represented you on city committees, county committees, and regional committees. I know how to reach across the aisle and to build partnerships, both through different parties and different constituents throughout the community. I have thoughtful, reasoned positions. I'm accessible. I build partnerships. I stand up for neighborhoods. I look forward to working with you and representing you on the Chico City Council for the next four years.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Butte County, I want to thank all the candidates for participating in our forum this evening. The audience may now applaud. Thank you to our media participants, our timekeepers, question sorters, and question gatherers. Thank you for being an attentive audience and for asking thoughtful questions. Go to votersedge.org to learn more about the candidates and the measures. Voters Edge of California is a league-sponsored website which offers every candidate in every race in the state a free webpage to post their candidacy. Remember to vote on Tuesday, November 8. Mail-in ballots should already have arrived in mailboxes on October 10. Encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote also. The Chico City Council Candidate Forum is now adjourned.